Okay, it's six P M. I hereby declare the Saltillo Planning Meeting called to order. Minutes reflect that Roger Gant and Mike Brewer are not present.
Roger and Mike Brewer.
Mm-hmm.
George. Minutes?
Yes.
All right, Saltillo Planning Commission, Tuesday, September twenty eighth, two, twenty twenty one, six P M. Members present, Mayor Darnell Lowery, Will Robson, President Greg Billing, Secretary Mike Brewer, Shep Morrell, City Planner. The town of Saltillo Planning and zoning commission was called to order by President Robson at six P M, Tuesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Roger Gant was absent for the meeting. The minutes for May twenty twenty one were read by Greg Billing Secretary. A motion was made to approve the minutes as read and amended by Robinson. There was a second by Brewer. The minutes from the previous meeting were approved. Old business. There was no old business. New business. Plante Morrell said that there was no new business. Mayor Lowery said that the meeting was called due to previous meeting being canceled. We want to keep the members of the board engaged and not be discouraged. Ms. Woods was called to present her concerns. She questioned the board's rulings for a living quarters to be established in her main street building, which is a commercial property. She also questioned the termination of the continued, uh, continuous use lane behind this property. Mayor Lowery stated that the previous minutes included the decision regarding living quarters in a commercial property. The discussion, the decision was based on current zoning of the property and verified by the city Plante Morrell. There is no conflict with zoning that prevents her from having a living quarters in said property. Mayor Lowery and Plante Morrell discussed and presented information on continuous use lanes. Mayor Lowery stated that there has never been any city maintenance associated with this lane. Therefore, the city of Saltillo has never accepted the land as a city street. Plante Morrell explained and defined the potential of a traverse or an inverse easement. Since the lane has never been accepted or maintained by the city of Saltillo, the question of continuous use is irrelevant. Therefore, this lane is not considered continuous use. President Robinson suggested that the property owner contact T D A C regarding the septic and water usage of the property before developing the potential living quarters. Woods said that she had already been in contact with T D A C. Woods said that her reply from T D A C recommended that a washer and, and dishwasher not be added to the property. The septic tank placement and field lines were discussed. Woods questioned the progress and recent developments associated with Saltillo Marina. Mayor Lowery stated that there was no further development and he has not heard from Curran since his last email. The email stated that Curran and his group would not be submitting a site plan to the planning commission. Mayor Lowery stated that there was no further business for the planning commission. He also stated that he would present and make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman that the lane behind Woods' commercial property is not considered commer- a continuous use. The next meeting was scheduled by President Robinson, October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, at six P M. Plante Morrell stated that more training is required before the end of the year and suggests that the next meeting be designated as a training meeting. A motion was made by President Robinson and, and to adjourn the meeting. Billing seconded the motion. The meeting was adjourned at six twenty one P M. Uh, just as I referenced, the next meeting, there is no meeting minutes from the planning session because it wasn't a meeting, it was a training session. So there were no, so this was the actual, the last minute. So, motion approved, minutes?
Motion approved.
Second. Questions, discussion?
Minutes?
Did you have something, Shep?
No, sir.
Okay, Will, I think we had something on T D A C or something that we was going to discuss pertaining to the, to the decision that we had made.
I had, no. At T D A C, apartment just says septic tank, fifty foot of field lines.
It said what now?
A septic tank and fifty foot of field lines and a sink and toilet. I'm like, we've been over that. I think they know that's it. That's just what T D A C permits is.
Oh, we got to copy that?
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you, you, if you had a living quarters though, you'd have to have.
Well, no, we, we, we just wanted to confirm that we can have with living quarters. Uh, if who, I'm not going to make living quarters. But I, I, I didn't, when we first talked in May, uh, with Mr., I couldn't get a hold of, of Will. I spoke with Greg. Uh, it was just to find out if we could have living quarters in a commercial building. And that's how it started.
Okay, but now, I think that probably we will, Shep, if you get me wrong, will we be, will we, uh, will we be wrong in voting to say that if she sold it, the people have living quarters without putting in there that what T D A C says? Because if somebody got a living quarters, they're gonna have a shower and kitchen and stuff like that if they can't have it, if they don't got enough field line.
Well, in the, in the previous meeting and even reference in this, this minutes, the question was, in a commercial area, can you have a living quarters? And it was determined at that meeting, yes, you can.
Okay.
We only took, uh, what she said from T D A C that she'd already talked to him as, and that's what the discussion was about, um, can you have living quarters or not? And then their discussion evolved into about the septic tank and she mentioned, like I said, it was, they said you couldn't have a dishwasher and a washing machine in there. What they said. So beyond that, I hadn't looked anything up. But if you found something different about what T D A C said beyond the fifty foot of field line and the, the septic tank, I mean, just, I think it's where the question is.
Well, I mean, long as, as long as, as long as the, the record reflects what T D A C has, has, has announced regarding the subject property, I, I think we good. And it, and if the question comes up with somebody, if the case, uh, yes, ma'am, I forget your name. Yes, ma'am, sorry. But Ms. Wood, in case Ms. Wood decides that she wants to do away with the property or sell the property, I think that, you know, once that particular person wants to do an Airbnb during the permitting process, that they be told that that particular time, that, that, that probably wouldn't be permissible due to T D A C not giving you.
Yeah, well, as referenced in our meeting minutes, that President Robinson, uh, suggested that the property owner contact T D A C regarding the septic and water uses of the property before developing the potential living quarters. So we said, yes, you can have one, but before you develop it, you need to make sure that T D A C is saying, you can't do these things. I mean, that's what the, that's what we said, what the minutes.
And that's correct. And so I think we, I think that's sufficient.
So the next, just to, if I can just discuss it, the next step is for whatever use of that, if it's an Airbnb or for whatever, that if it's an Airbnb, we got a city permit thing. We don't have a city department for a rental house or for a rental property. You know, like a, short term rental is what our ordinance is about.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, for short term.
Well, can I, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask a general question. With regard to this property, our, my property or any property? It's in a particular zoning, it's in a particular category for zoning and can be used for certain things. All of those properties have to meet the sewage and septic systems. So regardless of what's out there now, or what might not be out there, that has no bearing on, at least from, that I can see from the ruling that you guys have made. No matter whether it's us, somebody that we might sell it to, or this house right over here, this, all of them are supposed to meet the, uh, requirements for the proper disposal of sewage and septic system.
And I, I think you're right. I think it's what it says. It says, talk with T D A C to ensure that you can, or, you know, that you can do those things. But the only difference is that if it were somebody to buy it and they want to make an Airbnb, well, there's another hurdle.
But, 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 but really, my thing is, why would, why would he, it's common knowledge about you have to follow the septic rules. I don't think y'all do the septic rules, right?
No, no.
No, I would, that's a, that would, they'd be through the health department. Everybody would know that would be the health department, correct? So, I didn't.
Well, yes, ma'am, I, I, I would just say from a public health and a safety standpoint, why would anybody try to rent out a room that didn't have proper septic?
You, you, you wouldn't.
Right, so I don't even know why that would be an Airbnb then.
No, it, we, we didn't say Airbnb.
Oh, okay, well, I, okay, I was confused.
But.
I mean, we were just talking about what the, what could, you know, what could somebody do with a piece of property? But, uh, we would, anybody, whether it be us or Darnell or whomever, you've got to abide by the rules for your septic and all the other rules too. But I didn't understand why we would be, y'all would be pointing out the septic. Now, the confusion, the confusion here is, was when, uh, I got the number from, when we first started talking about it, I just got the number from, uh, Dawn about the, the guy that you took Mr. Williams' place. Cause we haven't dealt with anybody since Mr. Williams returned. And I called him on the phone. He wasn't in his office and he talked to him on the phone. And he said he remembered and he's the one that told me all that, okay? I didn't go, which I should have, or pulled it out of our files about to the health department to get the paper or look online or whatever, you know? So that was the confusion from the start. But regardless of that, if you do anything with a piece of property, you've got to follow the, the zoning laws in town and whatever. So to hold something up for the next person, maybe that'll be a little help. So this won't last so long.
Yeah, I, I think the original request that we wanted was clarification of the driveway in the back and that we could, it, it could be a living quarters. Now, having said that, it has to meet all the other requirements that somebody might want to do, you know? But we understand, we understand.
So are we at a point?
But planning, we do cover T D A C in planning and zoning.
Where, through the subdivision?
But not, not, it's not pertaining to.
In subdivisions are every house. Do, does the zoning board get into, uh, let's say any property on Main Street?
You have to make sure that the utilities are, are there before you approve anything. You have to make sure the utilities are there are septic or whatever. That's just part of the health, safety net. Health, health, safety, welfare nature of the job except they are planning commission. So yes, that's the purview. Now, they don't give T D A C permits or anything like that, but they have to do, they review the proposal in regards to their subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance. And in that nature, they look at it before as the others concerned, that, you know.
Well, what I was looking at is if you, if you sold a property and you told the people where you can have living quarters and then the people went in there and put in a shower and a kitchen and stuff like that, now, without knowing.
Well, we would, you would never, you, I don't think an honest person would do, sell something and not be, cause you would be liable then yourself.
I mean, they could add more feel, I guess, as long as they wanted that, they could come with their more ground and add more.
Well, that's, you know, and by the, in twenty years, maybe they, they won't even have the same kind of system. But we just wanted clarification about the continuous use and that you could have living quarters. And it would be our responsibility, not the zoning board, to go back and check my records to see if I had, uh, a, a septic system that could meet the needs. That, that, what, what the septic system is now is not the same as if somebody bought it and put in more lines or did some kind of different system. That, that was my point. That, you know, you can't, are y'all gonna go back and check everybody's, uh, like Tracy's across the street or Ms. Bailey's down by my house? Do y'all go back in?
If they propose like you doing, I mean, additionally, we would.
What, uh, when, when somebody adds to?
They had T D A C and electric and water.
Right, make sure those are in place, right? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
But now, this ain't got nothing to do with, I mean, what I'm looking at, and I'm not trying to be objective. I do, he just said that, that we could pass it with and then it'd be up to the people that bought it if they wanted to put in more field line.
Well, I, I think more of the issue is in previous meetings that septic and all were discussed, partially by you bringing it up about the water dishwasher. But what we did was specifically say, yes, in a commercial property, a living quarters can be established.
That's.
Yes, that avenue or lane behind that building is not a continuous use lane. So.
Okay, and those were in the minutes you just read from September.
Yeah.
So, but I didn't get that approval until tonight and this is the end of January. So, um.
All you need is coffee, the minutes.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I mean, it's, it's efficient now. Yet, it did take a little long. We had a training meeting. We didn't make, yeah, it took, it took longer than what you would want, but.
Well, I would hope, I hope this wouldn't happen to someone else. Cause it is, that is, you know, we initiated this in May and, and this is January.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I take your point. I understand what you're saying.
Sounds good, Mike. This is second written of it, so.
So we're done?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we both approve the minutes, right?
Okay.
Okay, now, what else we, what, Shep, you had?
Now, I was just, I was basically, I was hoping this guy was gonna answer any questions y'all might have had about the marina or whatever.
Yeah, this new business item basically is about the marina. We can discuss that for a moment. You wanna discuss that?
I, I would like to ask first.
I think it's on our agenda, yeah.
Before I just start talking about it, let's, let's talk about what the issue is before we just start, you know?
Okay, alright. Since I kind of brought it up, uh, I will kind of tell you what has occurred and what we're trying to avoid, okay? So in all the episodes of Jeff Curran, who y'all have recently seen in the news, since then, we've had, uh, the power attorney, Mr. Tate coming to present to us and said he was in control of the property based for Mr. Carl Fonberg. And that he was the only person that had anything to do with it. He had potentially some additional owners out there. I mean, some per buyers or something like that. But since then, somebody's been camping down there on that lot. Uh, in recent months, they've been camping. Uh, they have recent, I say left, I went and looked and I noticed that whatever they've been camping in is gone. So no one down there right now. But the issue that I, I believe we have is that even though he's the property owner, it's a campground marina zoning. And I don't think anybody should be camping down there doing anything unless they got a valid active permit for such. So I think to help Mr. Fonberg, cause I'm all for having marinas down there. I'm for that. I hope somebody buys it and does well. But before people start camping down there, that Mr. Tate just says, yeah, you can go camp down there, or before a potential buyer, we need to share with Mr. Tate and Fonberg the actual ordinances that provide the provisions of operation for a marina and the campground. So that before anybody goes down, just hangs out and camps for a couple of days, they have, it's a campground. That's what it's all for. They need to have it up to par, permitted and follow the expectation before we have a, who knows what, and, you know, spring weather's coming. For, we don't, we just don't want, we don't want it to be just, uh, open to do whatever. It needs to follow the ordinance that was set in place for this property. So that's how we're coming from.
Alright, sorry to have put you on the spot, Mr. Billing. Sometimes, you know, when you don't know where this, this thing is going, when, when, don't, I don't speak out of turn and say the wrong thing. But the question is, we do have marina, uh, regulations. There is a marina district in the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Here they are. I brought extra copies for people, for everybody public to see. And we do have campground regulations in addition to the campground and marina regulations that go into specificity about, uh, number of days of stay and all these other things. The number of hookups you can have and all this other. So this, fire alarms and all. And it's consistent with that that was promulgated in the state of Tennessee, uh, excuse me, Tennessee code annotated. So this is derived straight from the state provisions regarding arenas and campgrounds. Just tweaked so, uh, that we put the Saltillo normanclature in there before the naming of the mentions. But these are basically state, uh, provisions. So in addition to the minimum, uh, marina regulations or district requirements that they have in your zoning order, you still have, uh, uh, other orders that they have to abide by as far as the specificity of, the, it talks about the plans and specifications, gotta submit site plans and stuff that nature is gonna be added on to and all this. Uh, it talks about the permitting and inspection process, uh, the inspection procedures. And I'm not, it's, it's kind of lengthy, so I'm not gonna dare read all this. Uh, but I will have, and there are copies here for the public. Uh, goes into, uh, the reasons how your permit can be revoked and things of that nature. Facilities and grounds. It, it, it just gives specific regulations regarding that, fire safety. Uh, I, I, I should mention when it talks about fire extinguishers, you can't have a soda acid type of fire extinguisher on the premises. All it goes into detail about smoke detectors and fire alarms and electric. This is coming from the state provision. So, uh, in addition to that, those provisions that you have in the zoning ordinance, they have to also meet, uh, those particular provisions if they want to do the campground association agreements.
Well, I, I think all of us would like to see something nice there and a marina there. But for the protection of our city to ensure that it's something that's legit and nice after what we've been through, that we want to have something that is nice, the property owners that are in close proximity to there. We want something that, you know, they will be proud of as well and promote our city. And I just felt like we probably need to, to send the Fonberg and Tate a copy of these ordinance so that they would be well informed. And I, I just kind of helped myself in drafting a little letter. I could read it to you to kind of give you a gist of what I think we ought to do. But the board can decide what they want to do. But I, you know, my, my interest is, yeah, let's get us a marina in here, but let's follow some rules and make it nice. You want to read this letter to, you just say, give me an idea what I'm.
Sure, yeah, let's hear it.
I just, I, cause, cause you're the president, your name would most likely be on this letter. And I'm the secretary, so I would be the person too, I guess, and of course, mayor and everything. But basically it says to Mr. Tate, power attorney for Carl Fonberg, uh, of course, they got all the little stuff about Saltillo Marina Campground Permit Operation. So it says, Mr. Tate, in previous meeting with the Saltillo Board of Mayor and Alderman, you have communicated ownership, power attorney, possible sale of property and potential operation development of the Saltillo Marina Campground. Please be advised that there is no current permit for operation of a marina and or campground at your two seventy five or two fifty shoreline land. It's got two addresses. I'm not sure what's what. Uh, that may have to be something that needs to be reviewed, but you, you.
And one is a double wag trailer, I think.
Uh, that's, that's on, okay, cause that's on a residential property. That's not actually zone part of the marina. Uh, so shoreline land in Saltillo, and I, I just put it here, per ordinance, and I need to write down a specific ordinance number. So they permitted required for operation. Plans or specific, as plans or specification to operate, construct, remodel or change ownership must be submitted in writing to the Saltillo Board of Mayor and Alderman. Upon approval and inspection revealing compliance of the property, a permit for operation may be granted. Until such time, operating a marina and or campground is prohibited. Enclosed are the ordinances that govern provisions of operation of marina and campground. I mean, just kind of giving him information and saying, cause, you know, there are some fines associated with this per day if, if he goes down, if he, oh yeah, you can go down there and camp, help yourself. There are some fines associated with that if the Board of Alderman, the mayor, you know, pursue that, if something goes on. But I think to protect ourselves, protect our city and our interest, um, I think we need to communicate what, what the expectations are.
Nothing else than business license. If you're running a campground for profit, you have business license.
So are we proposing a sec, for you to send him that letter? Is that what we need to do?
I'm proposing that the president and this planning commission approve this letter with some tweaks from either our attorney or from our planner to inform him of what the expectations are for operation.
Well, the ordinances is to expect, that is what we expect, so. I, I, I mean, I don't know, Shep, I get you sending, if we vote tonight to send him the letter along with those ordinance would be sufficient.
I would think that that would cover. So he'd have that chance to, 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 to read what you had expected.
And we're not saying he can have a marina camp. We're saying, we, we want you to be informed so that before some other things may creep up based on what we've been through, that everybody's on the same page with what has to take place.
Okay, do the, does the Alderman board need to do that or he, he can go ahead and send that letter?
I mean, it can come from the planning commission, but either way it works.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that, uh, since Alderman's business has been working on it, I mean, it sounds good to me. And I know that we've had a lot of complaints. I know this spring, I guarantee you, it'll, it'll be some people camping down there and they shouldn't be unless they're permitted. So, so I'll make a motion that we accept the letter and, uh, and propose that we send it to Mr. Tate proclaiming what the ordinance says that he can do it at the marina campground.
I agree, I second.
Sure.
I've got another copy that I just give it to you and I just got a handbook or something. I'm just for record.
The motion is seconded. We need to vote. I don't need to vote in senate, no. I'll, I'll vote, yeah.
Yeah, okay. You need to copy that.
So that way when the spring come, they lease, it shouldn't be nobody down unless they have contacted.
What if the individual that owns the marina rents the marina? And the people that rent the marina, it is a personal use for the marina? How the work will.
I think the, the provisions, what he, what they have, if he rents it to somebody else, they use it to sell. The provisions say any conversion of that property has to be permitted, any conversion, be it sale, rent or anything. It's, it's in the, uh, the ordinances that says anything goes on down there because it's all for marina and campground. But any change of ownership, any conversions has to be permitted through this, uh, uh, board.
Okay, so, so you're gonna send the letter?
I just need to get official address and stuff, you know, like that from, from Mr. Tate. I don't have all that.
You got his phone number, give it.
I get it all inside.
I have his phone number. You got to take the phone.
Is there any more business to address?
Well, on the letter, I, I need to put his name on it, right?
I got you a letter.
You'll need to sign it and then we'll give him a final read through. Once it's put on the letterhead and you sign it and I sign it, then have it read through and signed, then we'll send it. So it won't beat them off, okay? So we can get all that.
I can make you, I mean, I got a letter, you have my, 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 I, I just, I, I got all of that.
Yeah.
Mr. President? Is there more business to address?
No, not at this moment, but I believe the next train, I mean, the next meeting, we're gonna have some training. Just be getting it out the way.
Okay.
Okay, you decide when to go have next meeting.
Alright, that's February.
Be honest with you, February is kind of tight. I've, I've got an R B O conference in, in the man between the lakes. But, uh, I think that starts, it's that Thursday into the first week of month. Wait a minute, this is a Tuesday, right?
Yes.
I'm, I should be, that should be good.
Twenty second.
It's, yeah, I, I, this should be good.
Okay.
You have my weeks crossed, boy.
Six, is it where you are?
Six P M, February twenty second, twenty twenty two.
Will it be just a training meeting or will it be?
Uh, if you have other business, I mean, if I get the other business prior to the meeting, we can put it on the agenda and so we can discuss it. Other than that, it would just be training. But we'll make allowance as far as case you have other business. I mean, no business.
Bring this guy. Okay, there's no further business? Make adjournment six thirty.